This is the meeting of the Scarborough Board of Education. It's October 1st, 2015. May I have the attendance?
Mrs. Bealy?
Here.
DeCiazo?
Here.
Mrs. Massengill?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Mrs. Shea? Ms. Harte?
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
We do. During the superintendent's report, we will go through the year-end financials. That's item number 5.0. And while many of us find the year-end financials very exciting and intriguing to listen to, Mrs. Bolton does a fabulous job at that. I'm actually going to move that and instead bring number 8.0, recognitions, up and we'll flip-flop the place of superintendent's report and recognition and we'll bring those recognitions up much sooner and before the year-end financials report. So, and I think that I see smiles out there, so people may be appreciative of that. That would be the only adjustment.
Okay. So, 8.0, which is now 5.0.
Mm-hmm.
The recognition portion. So, we have, who's gonna take the lead on that? We're gonna start with Todd.
Thank you very much. I'm here to honor the retirement of Bernie Knott. Bernie served as our maintenance supervisor for the Scarborough Public Schools, overseeing the crew that makes sure everything works in the district, from pencil sharpeners and clocks to boilers and air handlers. Bernie retired on July 31st of this year after just over 12 years of dedicated service. Loyal, willing to help, conscientious, and the desire to do things right are descriptions I would use to define Bernie as a school employee. Most impressive to me was Bernie's training and background in engineering. We could always count on Bernie to design and build things that would always be safe, never break, wear out, be torn down, vandalized, or destroyed. If you ever saw the climbing walls from the old Wentworth School, which are now reinstalled at the Blue Point School, both of which Bernie installed, you would know what I mean. Also, if you visited the plumber gym in the spring and saw the batting cages or any special services classroom to see the therapeutic swing suspended from the ceiling and used daily by students and staff in those spaces, you will see his handiwork and know what I mean again. Because of the hat he often wore, he was also known by students and staff as the cowboy, particularly by primary school students who occasionally saw him retrieving playground balls off the roof of Pleasant Hill School during recess. The man with the cowboy hat was no stranger to hard work. Bernie was pivotal in making sure that the schools were open and safe and accessible during and after snowstorms, perhaps shoveling more snow than anyone else in the district. Two years ago, when we shoveled and chipped ice from the old wheelchair ramp at the Portables and Wentworth on October 31st, yes, Halloween morning, I knew Bernie was thinking of retirement when he said, "I'm getting too old for this stuff." Last winter's record snows were, thankfully, for Bernie at least, his last swinging a shovel for the Scarborough Public Schools. His greatest pride and joy, though, are his grandchildren, with whom I imagine he is now able to spend more time. If you want to see Bernie smile, just ask him about them. So, thank you Bernie for over 12 years of outstanding and dedicated service and hard work. We hope you're enjoying your well-deserved retirement and your grandchildren. And if you ever have or miss the desire to shovel snow, I believe you still have my phone number.
And we have a little gift for you. Any comments from the board? Yes, Jackie?
Having been here as long as I have, I certainly know Bernie. And Bernie, I thank you for your service and your dedication. And I know that the children love you. And I really didn't recognize you tonight without your hat.
May you enjoy a wonderful retirement and enjoy those grandkids. How many do you have?
I'm jealous about Snow Park. So, maybe I'll give my number to Todd, too, and, you know, we'll work something else. Congratulations, enjoy your time off, and thank you.
Good luck. I'm sure you're gonna be very hard for Todd to replace. And I'm sure you will not miss one day of doing the shoveling of the snow. Good luck.
I was worried you weren't going to come because I really had to talk to Todd quite a few times to make sure you had the opportunity to come for him. We had the opportunity to thank you for all your hard work and your efforts for our school. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And Todd, great, great recommendation. Thank you. And we have one other retirement.
Yes. We have Ann Carson. Ann began her career in Scarborough Schools over 20 years ago in August of 1995, while in Scarborough most of her time was spent at the middle school. Although her official title was kitchen worker, Ann was the jack-of-all-trades. On any given day, Ann could be seen in a role as baker, cook, cashier, and even filled in for the kitchen manager in their absence. She truly was a team player. One of Ann's greatest strengths at the middle school was remembering the names of all students, a trait that made her one of the favorite with students. And I can speak to that because I would go into the cafeteria and Ann always had a smile on her face with all 500 to 800 middle schools as we, middle school students as we grew. And many times we had conversations about how many more kids are we going to get? And I'd just say, "Ann, just keep on going. We're just gonna keep on going here." But Ann really, truly was an inspiration in her value of middle school kids, their humor, and how to make their day and have them leave the cashier with a smile. She was also, she's also a hit with hockey players, girls, boys, high school, middle schools. She's a huge fan of ice hockey. Ann will be greatly missed by her coworkers, building administrators, and mostly her students. Thank you, Ann, for your 20 years with Scarborough Schools. And we have a little token of appreciation for all your work and for the smiles you brought to all the kids at Scarborough Middle School.
But you didn't bring any snacks tonight.
She retired.
For cooking for the throng.
Very positive.
Anyone?
We hope that Mr. Carson back there, I see you, that she'll continue to maybe still cook for you, so, and the family.
Thank you, Ann. It's always been a pleasure to s- and you do have always had a smile, whether you're delivering a special lunch because we're having a meeting here or at the high school on opening day, and it's greatly appreciated. And why don't you introduce your family to us? I know, there's a lot of them, but go ahead.
Wow. Your entourage, enjoy. Oh, wow. Well, three years ago, we were at a cookout at our neighbor Helen Howard's house. And you were there and you said to my daughters, "Are you in middle school yet? 'Cause I don't recognize you." And I said, "No, they're coming to you in the fall." And she said, "All right, that explains it." So, I believe that you know every one of those kids in the middle school, so.
Yep.
Enjoy retirement.
Thank you very much for all your years, Ann. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good time for yourself.
We had a good time.
Time to have fun. Actually, I asked you, Ann, the first day of school, I said, "Where is she?" Because I had forgotten you had retired. And I always see you. Oh, okay.
You're gonna start looking younger now, okay? I'm the first official day of retirement, and that's what happens to everybody.
Thank you. I don't think they wanna stay for this.
You sure you don't wanna stay?
Sure.
Congratulations, Bernie.
Thank you. Bye, Bernie. Please look, have fun.
Thank you, Bernie.
Bye, Bernie. See you here, to the stranger. And I'm just gonna go to 6.0 before we go to the financial piece. Just two quick reminders for you. This Monday at the high school, special school board meeting, 3:30, in the room right across from the auditorium.
Now, will that take the place of our...
No.
Third Thursday?
No.
So, this is in addition to?
I think Donna is gonna address the other one as well.
So, what we'll be doing Monday is hearing from the administrators, as you know, regarding their consideration, their thoughts, their questions that they have regarding the start and end of school times, and also help prepare us a little bit for the meeting in Saco with the benefit schools.
When is that?
That is October 15th, which is our regular school board night. And it's at the People's Choice Credit Union, okay?
Do you have any rest for that?
23 Industrial Road in Saco.
Oh, is that by the MHG ice arena, then?
Yes.
I believe so.
I know. It is.
No?
It is. It's near, and it's near the Scholastic Warehouse.
All right. So, what time does that begin?
6:00.
6:00 to 8:00.
So, that night of the 15th is our usual school board meeting. So, we're gonna need to decide, you know, what are we gonna do about that? Are we going to kind of call that our, call that our additional monthly school board meeting? And forego an additional meeting because we've got another one this summer?
Your last one. Yeah. I just wanna point out the board's gonna change before or immediately after that because right after that last one will be the election and the board seats at the next possible meeting.
Is that right?
I believe so.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it is.
What is it, like a day, a day, a few days?
There is a third Thursday in October, but you wouldn't ordinarily have a meeting.
This is the third Thursday.
Right. There's actually a lot of Thursdays. There's five Thursdays in October.
Five Thursdays. That's the number I was shooting for.
But we have to have a time to roast Chris.
Jack, not every day. What are you talking about?
He has to come back after.
I'm not saying that for that purpose. I'm just saying, remember, you're gonna have, we're gonna, you're gonna have a new board seated very shortly thereafter, on the 5th, right.
Two days after the election.
Right.
Happens every year.
Yeah. I still don't think we need to have another meeting, though.
No, I mean...
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
If we're gonna have two meetings to talk about schedule, then I don't think we need to add a makeup meeting. I think we've both covered it.
Tell it before meetings.
So, we would do that 15th in Saco in place of, and yet, I'm assuming we will not be sitting as a board down there. And I'm guessing we cannot enter into discussions as a board down there. We're basically there, I assume, to hear what they, what they're talking about for their district, right?
Yeah. Well, I thought this was a workshop of all of the local districts, wasn't it? Kind of an open forum?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
My only question would be, do we have an obligation to meet twice a month?
We are. We're meeting, I don't mind.
Officially, in a full...
That is official.
Well, I thought, I thought Donna just said that that's definitely...
The Monday is official.
Monday will be our official, okay.
Right. There's a second meeting.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
It'll be posted.
Yeah. No, that's fine. As long as, as long as we meet our requirement.
Obligation.
Yep.
And the next Thursday is MSMA.
We've got enough time to hang out. No offense, everyone, but this is fun. We've got other things going on.
I was looking, I was looking at the MSBA book yesterday and I remember reading a sentence, "This is a part-time volunteer position."
They're right with the volunteer.
It's supposed to be part-time.
Twenty-two hours in a day is part-time. It's not the full day.
So, I'm still trying to understand what happens that, on that night down there. If this is a workshop, they've invited us to their workshop. Can we enter?
It's not their board workshop.
Oh, it isn't?
No. It's a regional workshop. You're just attending as a board 'cause you're interested in this topic, which is perfectly fine. Of course you can.
So, we can enjoy in the conversation.
You're not gonna conduct any business.
Right, right, right. Okay, okay. All right, that's fine.
Yep.
Everybody all set? Okay. So, that's the chairs report. We don't have a student representative here tonight, so that takes care of 7.0. And now, we've done the recognition. We come to what was 5.0, which is the year-end financials, and Kate, all yours.
Yay. This is a really important part of the evening, right?
Mike's engaged.
I'm really grateful to Mike. We talked earlier. He said he was, he was, um, for this riveting presentation. So, we did go through with finance committee a little bit, an overview of this, but I'm just gonna give you a quick run-through. I've given you a lot of homework. I'm certainly not gonna be going here reading page by page. You can all understand what I'm talking about. I'm gonna hit the high points and get out, and then I will entertain questions at the end. And obviously, you know you can always reach out to me if you have questions after you've reviewed some of this material. So, in my department, we always seem to be either in the future or in the past. And right now, we're gonna spend our time looking back at fiscal year 2015. There were a few highlights in the fiscal year that come to mind in terms of what went on in the district. And I've bulleted those here. Continuing with our commitment to the goals of our school improvement plan, we implemented a budget for fiscal 15, which added or restored several key positions to our staff, increasing student access to art, music, foreign language, supporting technology in the classroom, student health and safety, and advances in teacher effectiveness. The summer of 2014 was the hectic final lap for the Wentworth Building Project. And September saw the successful opening of the new Wentworth School with the business aspects of the project winding down just to tidying up loose ends with the contractor and finalizing deployment of furnishings, equipment, and technology. And my slideshow is cranky. In fiscal 15, charter schools continued to present a budget challenge with the addition of the state-approved Main Connections Academy. And you'll see as we go along that our budget for charter school costs was exceeded, as we expected, and will require a couple of our requested budget transfers. In April, we held our third community dialogue and we continued to solicit the involvement of citizen stakeholders in the direction of our school programs and services. This is the summary financial statement, showing the big-picture movements in the general fund from the beginning to the end of fiscal year 15. You have the detailed figures by category in the printed financial reports in front of you. Here you see the available fund balance at the start of the fiscal year, the budget-to-actual status during the year, and the ending fund balance as of June 30, 2015. School fund balance was a topic of intense interest during the budget development process for fiscal year 2016. At the end of fiscal year 14, we had approximately $500,000 in undesignated fund balance. And the school board and town council decided to use $425,000 of that available funding to support the fiscal year 2016 budget. The good news tonight, from my perspective, is that in line with recent years, we've managed our way through fiscal 2015 with a positive fund balance for the year of just over $400,000. This means that we're in a position to use that $425,000 committed to support the fiscal year 2016 budget and still leave a balance of $490,705 in undesignated funds, which will be a comfort knowing how little margin for unexpected costs we now have in fiscal year 2016. On the next couple of slides, I'll point out a few items of note in the spending patterns for the year. As you saw in the summary statement, general fund expenses came in under budget by $595,000. In healthy fiscal years, we see a savings in the neighborhood of $400,000 each year, or about 1% of our annual budget, reflecting our need to manage according to our statutory obligations. This year's surplus was generated by the types of budget-to-actual changes you've heard me describe before, but it's driven a bit higher because of one item, the amount budgeted for debt service payments in fiscal year 2015. Because of changes in the town's bond issues in FY15, we were left with $170,000 of our budgeted debt service funds not spent. This surplus will move into school fund balance and become part of the $425,000 budgeted for FY16. Another point of interest this year is the continued impact of changes in collective bargaining agreements in the area of health insurance. While the change in spouse coverage for the teacher group was factored into budgeting for fiscal 2015, we also transitioned the education support staff and bus drivers to the same education model, to the same benefits model, mid-year, and saw additional savings in fiscal 2015 amounting in total to about $150,000. Other larger areas of savings were just under $800,000, excuse me, $80,000 in Wentworth facility costs, utilities and maintenance costs in the new building, a little over $50,000 in energy costs, mostly bus and truck fuel, and the rest is made up of incremental savings throughout the operating budget. As you know, I know you know, 'cause I tell you this every year, I'll be requesting an action item from you tonight to authorize budget transfers to balance individual expense accounts that have been overspent by $10,000 or more. These year-end budget transfers ensure that we take note of these accounts and can perhaps use the information to refine future budget development. As usual, whenever we have a deficit in one account, we have a surplus in another area to use to offset it. This year's budget transfer request includes 10 overspent expense accounts out of 624 budgeted lines. And the value of the transfers represents 0.56% of the fiscal year 15 budget, indicating that we were pretty accurate in our budget. If you'll take a look at the budget transfer documents, and that's the two-page one with the pink and green. These are the items that we're going to take action on this evening, or I'm hoping that you'll support me with. You'll see that as in prior years, there are a number of accounts overrun in individual salary, wage, and benefit accounts due to personnel changes during the course of the year. In each case this year, the accounts that have run over budget can be offset by surplus in other wage and benefit accounts, where for the same types of reasons, we have excess budgeted funds. Taking a look at some of the other cost overruns on our budget transfer request, we can see first, charter schools, as I mentioned earlier, ran over budget in both the regular ed and special ed accounts. So, they were in the first and second section of that chart. We were able to offset these cost overruns with savings in wage and benefit lines as well as through some deferred spending. as well as through some deferred spending at the high school. Also, under special services, you'll see that tuition paid to outside schools exceeded our budgeted resources, driven both by increased tuition rates mandated by the state and by the need to provide the appropriate educational setting for every student. Here, we're able to offset with savings in special services, salary, and benefit lines. Under school administration, we had an unexpected cost due to retirement at Wentworth, offset by savings due to structural changes in leadership positions that were precipitated by that retirement. That's the third section there. And the final section is the entry for heating oil at Eight Corners, which were offsetting by natural gas at the middle school. It's simply a result of fluctuations in energy use. We didn't have drastic cost changes this past year in fuel costs. We were just under-budgeted a bit for the cold weather at Eight Corner School. So, it's a pretty simple chart. It's all within the same categories. And I'm showing you a slide that I doubt anyone can really read, but it's simply a copy of the financial report, the first section of the report that starts with notes and comments. So, you'll have that in front of you, as well as on this teensy-winky slide. This slide shows a summary of expenses in fiscal 2015, and it's laid out in the eleven voter categories developed by the state. As you can remember, we started to organize our financials using these categories last year in an attempt to make our reporting more consistent with the way the budget is now presented. So, when we talk about district-to-district comparisons of per pupil spending during budget conversations, these are the categories the state is using in their data table. So, in this slide, you might be able to see. If not, you can look at the top of page three in your financials report. And you'll see that you have the expenditure percentage for each category, along with the same figures for the past two fiscal years for comparison. George is reading that like he can actually see that.
I can see it.
You can see it?
Well, if you turn... No, if you turn this way, you can see that one. Yeah, look at the giant one.
You have to turn the other way, exactly.
If you look that way.
Right. I can see it right here.
She's got it right in front of her. This slide is another view of the year-end totals by category. This time, it's showing tonight's requested budget transfers between categories. And this is pretty small again, but it's a simplified version of page two of the budget transfer handout. And that's the pink and green one again. I'm sorry to take you back and forth here. But the page two of that account, according to state statute, during the year for which the budget is approved, using the Cost Center Summary Budget Format, the school board may transfer an amount not exceeding 5% of the total appropriation for any cost center to another cost center, or among other cost centers, without voter approval. So, what we're saying here is that we have the authority to do these budget transfers that I'm requesting of you tonight, provided that they don't exceed removing up over 5% of any budget category into another. And the point of this chart that's attached to your budget transfer chart is that we're showing that we haven't done that. We haven't needed to do that. This is something that both the auditors and Department of Ed look at each year. And obviously, it's something that we strive for because even though it's a little bit of an arbitrary distinction, it does help the public see what we're spending school funds on and ensure that we're appropriately carrying out the wishes of the voters at referendum. We switch to revenues for a minute. If we go down through that detailed financial report, this is at the bottom of page three, right below the expenditures piece. Fiscal year 2015 revenue showed an overall shortfall of $36,547, under budget projections. Revenues fell a bit short in student activity fees, which we have understood in the past as an effect of setting the fees lower than the original projections when the fees were established. GPA, which is our General Purpose Aid State Subsidy, shows a shortfall of $30,000. This is due to the State Department of Education's new policy of deducting funds from our GPA to pay private, special-purpose schools, that's special education outside placements, directly on behalf of sending districts. So, our tuition bills from those schools are reduced on the expenditure side, although, as you can see, we still spent plenty there. We did a little better than expected as you're looking at the revenue figures with state agency client reimbursement and Medicaid reimbursement. Those are basically driven by changes in enrollment of eligible students. And as we probably all remember, they're a little difficult to budget. But we came in on the good side on those. Continuing through the financial statement, obviously, we spend most of our time on the general fund, but it also, the financials also include figures on adult education, school nutrition, grants and trust, and federal restricted funds, meaning the title grants and local entitlements. There's also a separate year-end status report on multi-year CIP projects. And those are in your financial reports on pages four and five. Couple of points of interest here. The proficiency-based graduation grant funds from the state. Now, that's a topic that we've all been talking about, circling around student-centered learning, proficiency-based graduation, student-centered scheduling. We did get grant funds from the state. We got about $30,000 last year. We got another $30,000 the year before. And we're beginning to spend those funds on things like professional development, curriculum development, and teacher research into how we can move forward to have that target of proficiency-based graduation. So, there's some spending showing there. There's also a new entry in that section, under grants and trusts. It's labeled CC Administrators Recertification Group, or something like that. And it's the Cumberland County School Administrators Group. They have to get together and recertify on a different level than teachers do in local districts. So, there's a multi-district consortium that gets together and does that. And they needed a new fiscal agent because the nice lady in Cape who did it for them retired. So, Joanne, I think, said Kate'll do it. I'm pretty sure that's how it went.
Yeah.
So, that's really kind of... In financial terms, it really sort of counts as a trust. It's just a little closed account that we only use for that purpose. They have revenues. They have membership dues. They have expenses, which is their coordinator and their cookies at the meeting. It's not too hard. I can do it.
Granola bar.
Joanne. Quickly, on adult education. You remember, last year, we moved adult education out of the general fund reporting, gave it its own section in the financials, following guidance of the Department of Education. In fiscal year 2015, we did a better job anticipating the cost of our new workforce programming, but we ended up with a shortfall in state subsidy. If possible, subsidy calculations for adult ed are even harder to predict than regular GPA. Joanne will speak to that. Even so, adult ed programs continue to thrive, and the overall fund balance at year-end is positive for adult ed. And school nutrition. Like other topics I've mentioned tonight, the school nutrition program received lots of attention during the budget development process for fiscal year 2016. As you can see, we've ended 2015 with a fund deficit of $156,000. And we'll be requesting your vote to cover that deficit later in the meeting. We were excited to welcome Peter Esposito as our new food service director this past July. And we're already enjoying some of the creative and delicious ideas he's brought to the district. As you know, we've entered into a shared services agreement with Cape Elizabeth for school nutrition. And we're hopeful that we'll achieve some operational efficiencies and continued program improvements through this model. As I mentioned earlier, a highlight of the 2014-15 fiscal year was the opening of the new Wentworth School. Instead of including a one-page summary of the Wentworth project expenses in the main financial report, as I've done for the past couple of years, I've given you a separate, larger packet of Wentworth financials. Now that we've essentially come to the end of the project, I thought it might be interesting for folks to see some of the details of the expenses involved. I've been accused of showing off because it's pretty thick. And I think Kelly and I were talking about the fact that I'm just trying to prove that I did some work on the Wentworth project. But I do think that there's some interesting details in there. It's kind of fun to follow the trajectory of the project and the things that went into it. The Wentworth School construction project was notable for its smooth progress and its timely completion. Project financials are almost complete. A small balance of about $12,000 is owed to the contractor, pending final site work. The project was budgeted by the Wentworth Building Committee at over $3 million less than the amount approved by Scarborough Citizens at referendum, and finished at an additional $300,000 under budget, as you'll see from the project summary. You may recall that we've included $250,000 of this surplus in our budgeted funding for FY 2016. And the remaining balance will also be applied toward future debt payments on the project. So, to look forward for just a minute, a few things that are coming up. Fiscal year 2016, first quarter financials, which closed today. It just doesn't stop. Will be provided to the Finance Committee at their next business meeting and then distributed to the full board. Secondly, we're in the process of putting together materials for the auditors for fiscal 15. They'll start their field work with us this year on November 9. And they expect to complete the combined school and town audit in late December, as usual. And they'll have a presentation, as usual, after the new year. And finally, here, despite a good measure of budget fatigue after the long approval process for fiscal year 16, we've already begun conversations about the budget development process for the coming year. Most stakeholders agree, I think, that we made great strides last year, both in collaboration with town leaders and in outreach to the public. But there's obviously more work to be done to engage the community productively in this important work. So, I'll leave you with the action items that I'm requesting tonight. I believe Mr. Chiazo will provide you with the appropriate motion. It's under your agenda, item 9.4. If anyone has any quick questions right now, I'll be happy to respond. And I reiterate my invitation for follow-up questions once you've had a chance to read your homework. Jackie?
Kate, do you know offhand how many students are now outplaced for special needs?
I don't know, right offhand. I'm thinking about some of the budget work that I did with Allison. And we did have figures in the dollar amounts, but I don't know how many students that represents.
Thank you. And have booster commitments been met for those areas where boosters are funding?
For fiscal 15, yes. For fiscal 16, I know that Mike has been working on some contracts and getting some agreements in place and sorting out who's going to be taking care of what. But for fiscal 15, we're all set.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just do want to extend my gratitude to Kate. I think if you look at the, and her team, but mostly Kate, if you look at these numbers, it's a forty, close to $42 million budget. And to require $235,000 in transfers may sound like a lot of money. But doing the quick math, it's 0.56% of the budget. So, that is definitely a testament to her budgeting capabilities and the fact that we are, in fact, good stewards of the town's money. So, I think, I just want to say thank you to Kate for that hard work. It definitely doesn't go unnoticed, certainly on my side, because you do all the heavy lifting. But great job. I think that's a huge testament to the work that's done.
Thank you. As I said in Finance Committee, I did it all myself. I also think I made a snotty comment about how stingy most of my colleagues are in their spending. And they're good, thrifty Yankees. And they work really hard not to spend money that doesn't need to go out the doors. I give them my gratitude. Anyone else? Good. Do you have a motion?
So, there are actually two motions that'll come forward. First motion is move approval to authorize budget transfers for accounts overspent by more than $10,000 per the details provided to the school board by the business office.
Second?
Any discussion? None of...
Again, I just want to... Yep. I just want a couple of things of clarification again. The... Certainly, the transfers on the charter school, I think we discussed in finance, are going to be a one-time thing. The state's changing their funding around, so we won't be seeing those on a regular basis. That wasn't necessarily something that we missed. It was a combination of not getting data in time from the charter schools and the fact that not being able to predict where the kids were going and when they were going. Also, kids that kind of come into the district and out of the district during the course of the year. So, that's not a full amount, of course, but that's one of the areas that I think that are going to change for next year, for sure. Most of these transfers, I think, as Kate mentioned, are personnel issues. And again, the value of the transfers, the size of the transfers in comparison to the budget are really miniscule. I mean, $230,000 is a lot of money, but relatively speaking, it's a very small percentage of our budget expenditures.
I'll just make one more comment. George and I were talking about this earlier, and, you know, that it is, considering how many GL accounts we budget for and how much time takes place between the finalization of the budget and the people that turn up in September and come to work, it's a small amount. But I don't think that we need to believe that we're doing anything wrong or that it will go away, or it will become fewer accounts next year. I think that it's pretty much business as usual to recognize that some of these accounts are going to need adjustment. But that's why the board policy is there, is to take a look. And if anything unusual occurs, like the charter school situation or the spent tuition situation, it's another opportunity for us to reflect on that and see if we need to do anything differently.
Anyone else? Very good. So, your motion is for number one, for the transfer of funds for the $10,000. Everyone in favor? Five, and that would be one absent. And another motion?
So, the second motion is move approval to transfer $156,164 from the general fund year-end fund balance to cover school nutrition fund deficit.
Move approval as presented? Oh, I'm seconding. Second.
Any other questions? Yes?
Again, just to point out that that shortfall is more on the revenue generation side. We are limited with how much money we can charge for a meal in town because of the federal program. And Kate, please, obviously, you'll correct me where I go wrong here. Certainly, bringing Mr. Esposito on board, I think, is going to increase our participation in the revenue side of things. I had a chance to participate in the Harvest Lunch, and it was absolutely fantastic. So, I think that's a wonderful program for our kids. He's bringing a lot of local produce, which is good, healthy stuff. It's engaging local farmers. And he's saving money as well, which is something that I think we should very, very, very much appreciate, all of us. And I would encourage people, wherever possible, to see if you can participate in a meal or two there.
And a lot of homemade things, so not prepackaged, processed, like chicken tenders. They're fresh and breaded with panciled breadcrumbs.
Made from scratch.
That's the cooking in the kitchen and not just assembly.
And Chris is absolutely correct. If you look at the financial statement, the school nutrition program came in under budget on the expenditure side. It's the revenue place where we've fallen off. So, Peter has some really innovative ideas. We're really, you know, first of all, we're looking forward to eating all of his food. And then, secondly, we're looking forward to having the program thrive a little bit more.
And just for those that didn't make it to Harvest Lunch, at least at Wentworth, compostable little trays. And the kids, they...
There you go.
The kids were very good with instruction as to what bins, the various things, though some other members that we attended with weren't as kind in that regard. But it all worked out in the end. The young students were able to step up to the plate and take care of that. So, it was lovely.
Keep your belts in mind.
Yeah.
Well, I would just like to point out that some of those in attendance who were being accused of not being helpful listened the first time and weren't talking while instructions were being given to the children. But again, I will not use names.
Good thing I wasn't there.
All in favor of the motion? Five and one absent. Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you, Kate. Good job.
Thank you very much. And now, we move...
And now we move on to nine point oh, new business. Nine point one, minutes of the meeting of September third, 2015. Move approval? Second. Any other corrections, solutions? Very good. All in favor? Five, one absent. Nine point two, the main meeting minutes of September seventeenth, 2015. Move approval as presented? Second. Any comments? Questions, changes? Nope? Okay. All in favor? Five, one absent. Nine point three, the main school board association delegate. Jackie, do you want to? We have a, a form we need to sign here this evening, and let me just see if I can put my hands on it. It's a certification of the school board representative to the delegate assembly of the main school board association, and my understanding is that would be you? Is that correct, Jackie? Is that where?
No.
Okay.
Not necessarily.
Oh, okay.
I will be there in attendance as a member of the board, but I would prefer that there'd be another member of the board as the voting member representing Scarborough.
So anyone attending can, can do this? I have done it before.
I've done it before.
You've done it before, Christine?
I did presentations before.
Yeah, okay, so try to trump it. I'm unsure of my work schedule right now, so I can't commit today that I'm going to be there both days, so.
And I don't remember which day they do this on. Is it on the Thursday or Friday?
The first day, usually.
Thursday.
I think it's Thursday afternoon, the last, like, two o'clock or half, yeah.
And I know Jody's in a similar situation with work, so.
Right, okay, and, and I know one of those days I might not be able to be there, but-
Oh, I was on you, Christine.
Oh, I guess that's a shame.
Do you want to do it? But I, I can do it if-
What, uh, which session is it? It's the last session, then?
In the afternoon, usually.
Right after lunch, usually.
It takes one of the sessions, right?
Right after lunch, usually, this afternoon.
All right, sure.
All set?
Oh, it's great.
Thank you, Christine. We'll put you down.
Nice to volunteer, isn't it?
What did you say, Kelly?
Nice to volunteer.
Yes, mhm. Or be slowly hen-picked to become volunteered.
And then we need a name for, of an alternate for that same issue, in case you're ill or whatever it may be.
I could, I could, I would just soon be the alternate.
Oh, okay.
I will be there.
You'll be there anyway.
And that's for sure that I will be there, so.
Oh, here, it tells me exactly what time I'm supposed to be somewhere here, right here.
Okay.
Two twenty-five. All right, I'll put that, my count.
So I need a motion here.
I move Christine Massengill to be our delegate for the main school board association convention.
And Jackie.
And Jackie's the alternate.
Second.
Very good. Discussion, seeing none? All in favor? Five.
You don't have a choice.
One absent. Thank you, Christine. Nine point four. Well, actually, we did that.
We're on to appointment.
Nine point five, appointments. Wentworth Homework Club, we have, we have a list of that.
But these are, I think, as Shay brought up, or asked the question, last year, there were four at Wentworth. We just had two that you approved in the previous business section of the meeting that we had. These are the second two individuals, so it's the same funding and the same operation as last year, that you approved those.
Will of the boards?
Move approval as presented?
Second. Any discussion, questions? Very good. All in favor? Five, one absent.
And nine point five point two is high school co-curricular. These are not all. There will be some coming forward, I understand, from Mr. Legage, but these are requiring your approval as of right now.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion, any questions from Mr. Legage?
So I have one question. So the TBD on the school speech and debate, do we have, I mean, do we have a candidate that's just not fully committed kind of a thing, or are we still looking for somebody?
I think we have some candidates.
Okay. Right. Oh, okay.
Jerry Heber.
Oh, yes, yes. Okay. Thank you.
All in favor? Five, one absent. Very good. Okay, and ten point oh, our motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second. We're not doing committee reports?
All in favor? Five. We are adjourned.